I stayed awake.
Oh, yeah? Were you asleep?
Eleven fifty-eight, I think I fell asleep watching Times Square.
You didn't hear it?
I did, it woke me up, but I was sleeping when it first started, I didn't know what was going on.
I gave one last, like, really good last.
Yeah.
Have you ever been up here?
No, I never have. Thirty years I've been in this building so many times. Let's do it. Ready? Is there, is there a bar there? Is there a bar? Yeah, I think you're not there now.
No, but I have one at my house.
I know you do. You're not finished it. Got to wait till you finish your project.
The bar never closes.
The bars.
Was it good?
Excellent.
On my list, or maybe this one?
The acting in it was phenomenal, everything was, and I could see why not the five golden stars. It deserved it.
Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present, for those who are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I ask you remain standing after the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Lord whose name stands, in our nation, under God, in the visible, in liberty and justice for all.
Standing. Just want to take a moment to remember longtime Madison residents who we lost over the last couple of weeks. Joseph Strokoff, a longtime Madison resident, passed away on January fourth, age of eighty-seven. He is behind his sons, John, Joseph Junior, Gregory, Matthew, his daughter Stacy, and seven grandchildren. He was preceded in death by his wife Angela in two thousand and three. He was born in Bronx in nineteen thirty-six. A longtime American and world history buff, and Joseph served his country honorably in US Navy after high school. He earned his Juris Doctorate degree from Columbia University and was attorney for AT&T for many years. And after his retirement, a law professor at Saint Elizabeth College. And he served as a member of the Madison Board of Health from two thousand and two to two thousand and three, and ran for Borough Council in two thousand and six, so he wanted to serve his own community. He was avid sports fan, coached his children, grandchildren, and constant figure on the sidelines cheering, supporting his children, and then later his grandchildren. He was a longtime parishioner of Saint Vincent Martyr Church. And also remember Ann Bartek, who died on December twenty-fourth, age eighty-two. Survived by her sister Nancy, and numerous nieces and nephews and friends. She was predeceased by her husband, John. And Ann was born and raised in Madison, graduated from Madison High School. And when, before she was married, she was a hairdresser and went in to raise her children. Ann and John initially lived in Wharton, came back to the town they loved in nineteen eighty, Madison, and was office manager for her husband's medical practice in Madison for many years. She was also a lifelong parishioner of Saint Vincent Martyr. She was gifted artist and prolific writer, enjoyed painting, ceramics, and writing poetry. So let us take a moment to remember Joseph Skalkoff and Ann Bartek, and let us pass our thoughts on to our families and friends that they leave behind. Thank you. Oh, this is a better chair. It's still firmer. Why not need it still firm, anyway?
I have a motion for the executive minutes of November thirteenth and November twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion for the regular minutes of November thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion for the regular minutes of November twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome all. I was gonna say, Happy New Year, but according to Larry David, you're supposed to stop that on January seventh. Yesterday was your last chance, so, anyway, Happy New Year, anyway. And welcome back, John, to the table.
Thank you.
Glad you're back here again. And speaking of holidays, you know that Christmas trees are beginning to appear at the curb instead of in people's homes. It's a sign that we've wrapped up another great holiday season. The tree on Waverly was one of the best, and sadly, it must come down at some point, too. But I'm sure the Toto family and the Christmas committee are already scouting out next year's tree, and already planning the parade. And one of the traditions I have every Christmas Eve is I visit the downtown businesses around noon time. This year was a, it was a Sunday, so I was a little different with some of the stores already decided to call it a season, but many were still open. And the general consensus was that, you know, business was down slightly from last year, but overall, it was a great season, shopping season in Madison. And that's a sign that the work of Lisa Ellis, the DDC, MACA, our businesses, really pays off. From the music between Thanksgiving and Christmas to Secret Santa giveaways, we give those from the outside that come to Madison many reasons to come back and visit. And this goes for the rest of the year when it's, you know, you look at the Chamber events, from Halloween to Easter, everything else they do, to our outdoor dining, and of course, Battle Hill Day, we show we have a vibrant town, so thank you to all that make that happen. Of course, last Tuesday was our annual reorganization meeting. As I, and more importantly, visitors from neighboring towns often say, no one does it like Madison. So Bob Landergan, John Forte, and I had the honor to be given the oath of office by Lieutenant Governor Tahisha Way. And her comments to the audience, both here and at home, were right, right on spot. And there are so many people that worked so hard to make that such a special day, including Liz Osborne, right next to me here. Not only getting everything ready for that meeting, but if you ever work with me as I'm managing all the appointments, it can, could be a little stressful at times, but we try to make it get through there. We all get there. In the back, our communications director, Michael Plessier. Coordination with Lieutenant Governor's Office was, they were very impressed with all the communication we had. Executive Assistant Kathy Nautain. I, I see in our, in the back there, Lisa Quinn, Amy. I saw you helping out as, as we were getting ready for every great event here, you're ready to help out. So thank everyone in the building that made our reorganization meeting so great. And in case you missed it, at the meeting, we did have a remembrance for Rocco Iosa, who died in the early hours of the new year, three, three days short of his eighty-first birthday. I had the honor to do a reading at his funeral service, and truly, as I mentioned at the reorganization meeting, Madison lost a piece of its heart with the passing of Rocco. So let's go out to the family. And a few days before Christmas, December twenty-first to be exact, I visited Sunrise to present a proclamation to Preston Lee in honor of his hundredth birthday. And he was, actually, a hundred years he was able to blow out the candle. He did not have a hundred candles on his cake, but he did very well, I was very impressed. Not only is he a resident of Sunrise, but he had been a longtime Madison resident before moving into Sunrise. His daughter and grandchildren live right in the Fairwood neighborhood, so they can walk there to visit. So it was a great honor to be there and wish him happy birthday. And as we come out of our first plowable snow in quite a while, we are preparing for a major rain and windstorm, which will be Tuesday into Wednesday. Rest assured, police, fire, and public works are all preparing to respond as needed. But more importantly, they've been taking steps today, and will continue to take steps tomorrow, such as making sure storm water inlets are open, some of the easement areas where there's stormwater collections behind homes that are ready to take us on. But not, not only is this, could be a major event with the three-plus inches of rain they're calling for, but dust up to fifty miles per hour. With the recent snow, recent rains, our ground is saturated, that's not a great recipe. So, you know, just be prepared, and if you're someone like me that relies on a sump pump, bless it before you go to bed tonight, and make sure it's ready to run. And for the Employee of the Month for January is firefighter EMT Evan Webb. Evan has been invaluable in transition of the Madison Volunteer Ambulance Corps to a musically operated EMT service. His knowledge of the industry and regulations, as well as support during the process, will ensure that Madison residents get the best medical treatment in an emergency. And when you dial nine-one-one, they will be there. And this past Tuesday, January second, was Tom DiBiase's last day as our Water Department Foreman. Tom started in nineteen seventy-nine, yes, you heard that right, nineteen seventy-nine. And January twenty-second marks his forty-fifth anniversary of the first day he stepped into the DPW building to work for Madison. His dedication to maintain our water system is incredible and is, you know, part of a family tradition. So please, this week, when you turn on that water, to get that, and you get that glass of water, raise your glass, and thank Tom DiBiase for forty-five years of service to Madison. And Luke, if your family's here, too, bring them up, too. Congresswoman Sherrill, there we go, in her DC office, and we'll be spending the spring semester abroad in Madrid. So, you know, we, we've, we talk often at our closing lunches about the importance of interns, that not just the, you know, you get experience out of it, but you've made a truly an impact in, in our borough. And right, right now, next we have Lisa and Amy, who really have been working with you side by side, and, you know, I'm sure they appreciate all that work. I'm gonna ask Julian Barak, who's the administrator of Morristown, to say a few words. She is the Treasurer of New Jersey Municipal Managers Association.
Good evening, and thank you for having me here, Mayor. And thank you to all the council members and dignitaries present. Congratulations on the award. I'm here representing the Executive Board of NJMMA. Somehow, I became Vice President. They skipped, yeah, long story. But I'm, but I'm, I'm happy to be here, you know. Our, our profession's important, local government's important. You know, we're the ones that touch everyone's lives every day, filling potholes and collecting garbage, and all this sort of thankless things that we do that impact all of our lives. And we think it's very important to support the future of public service. And elected office is important, but also, it's important to do all the other jobs we do every day. So we're really looking forward to supporting the people who come to work and, and do this sort of bureaucratic work. And the interns are important. I know I started my career as an intern when I was in college. So I'm, I'm happy to acknowledge the work of a fellow intern. And I wish you all the best in your future endeavors, and I hope that you consider public service as a career path.
Amy and I have been working in the Building Department for over ten years now together, and we have been fortunate enough to be part of this program, as well as the college students that we get. I feel that they're also fortunate enough to be exposed to local government. And we try to just kind of groom them, show them what we do every day, and some excel. Over ten years, we've had, some summers one intern, some summers four interns, and they're all good, and we love them all and miss them all when they leave, but Luke was a standout. He, last summer, was ours full-time, the whole summer, and, and just really excelled in everything we gave him to do, every task. There was never even a downtime where he would be like, what can I do next? What can I, what, what's, you know, what's next on the agenda? So we really appreciate you, and we do miss you every day, just your personality alone. And we know you're gonna excel in everything you do, so best of luck to you. And I know we'll just always be behind you and just supporters of you.
Aw.
Do the people want to say anything? I'm late, there's more.
Obviously, love to thank the NJMMA for this award. I didn't even know I was nominated until they emailed me that, you know, I had received it, and that was a great surprise, so thank you to whoever from the building nominated me. I think working in Madison Harley Dodge and, you know, the HDM entirely has really provided an amazing perspective on the importance of local government and how it runs a community. I really think that I take for granted my two summers here at HDM, whether it be down in Water and Light in the first summer, or down in Building in the second summer. And, you know, you really get an understanding of how important each individual department within the building is to operating an entire community and an entire town. And I think, you know, whether it be chasing open permits, or filing, or, you know, going through, and, you know, digital, digitalizing a Water and Light current system, which I did the first summer, like, it's the little projects that make you realize how important local government is, and how it really provides the fluidity of a town, a working town, a successful town. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Amy, a way to help support his education includes a scholarship of, what was the, fifteen hundred? Yeah, fifteen hundred, so you might double-check the back of the plaque there, it might be, I'm not sure if it's there or not. And if, and if somebody say, I think I've seen Luke somewhere else besides helping in the Building Department, he was very often greeting people at the farmer's market every Thursday, so, yep, yep. So thanks again, and congratulations to the whole family.
Now we move on to reports from committees. Public Safety, Council President Range.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, Madison Police Department leadership spearheaded a task force comprised of officers from Morristown, Morris Township, Morris County Prosecutor's Office, the Morris County Sheriff's Office, Chatham Township, Chatham Borough, East Hanover, Hanover Township, and Flora Park, in a coordinated effort to target auto theft and residential burglaries. These agencies dedicated officers to the cause, which was responsible, which is in response to the statewide epidemic of motor vehicle thefts and residential burglaries. The, this task force will be continuing its details on a recurring basis in the coming weeks and months. Detective Jerry Nantone will be the newest officer to teach the DARE program for Madison Police Department. He is currently in training for two weeks, and upon completion, will be assigned a fifth-grade Madison Elementary School class to have as his own. DARE, which stands for the Drug Abuse Resistance Education, is taught to all fifth-grade Madison classes by trained Madison officers, and gives kids the skills they need to avoid involvement in drugs, gangs, and violence. And from the Fire Department tonight. For the month of December, the Fire Department responded to thirty-one general alarms, twenty-three still alarms, forty-four investigations, seventy-five medical calls, for a total of a hundred and seventy-three calls. December was the busiest month of the year, and the busiest in recorded history. And if memory serves, November was the prior busiest month of the busiest year for the Fire Department last year. Overall, twenty-twenty-three, the Fire Department responded to one thousand four hundred and seventy-four various calls, making not only November and December those busy months, but making twenty-twenty-three the busiest year for the Fire, for the Fire Department. Much of that was in the second half of the year, as they took on increased responsibilities with the partnership and the new structure with the volunteer, with the Madison Volunteer Ambulance Corps. Some other notable events in twenty-twenty-three include a house fire at thirty-six Brookley Road, and the apartment fire at seventeen Madison Avenue, a house file, fire at fifty-two Niles Avenue, the dumpster and structure fire at forty-one Prospect, a car fire, which was arson at three hundred Madison Avenue, seventeen requests for helping neighboring towns in mutual aid, sixty motor vehicle accidents, a hundred and three gas leaks, and thirty-three smoke conditions. So it was indeed a very busy year for the Fire Department. The ladder truck has been repaired and is back in service after having its hydraulic systems totally rebuilt at the factory. And both the Police Department and the Fire Department, and Mayor already mentioned it, but it's worth repeating, with the storm coming in tomorrow, both Police and Fire Department have additional personnel scheduled and are ready to respond in the event of the emergencies. Please check your sub pumps tonight and tomorrow morning before the heaviest rain arrives. And if you do encounter a flood condition on the road, do not drive through it. And if that flood condition happens in your basement, the Fire Department is available to assist in pump outs as time and staffing allows. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And before we go to the next report, I just, I forgot to welcome a special guest we have in the audience, a recently retired Councilman John Hoover. So thank you for coming back, good to see you, you still have, your calendar is still keeping you here. Excellent. And now we'll move on to Finance Borough Clerk, Liz Erlich.
Thank you, Mayor. The Clerk's Office has several announcements tonight. In anticipation of the June fourth primary election, the filing deadline for nomination petitions for a county committee member, as well as municipal office, is March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four. Candidates for municipal office must file nominating petitions in the office of the Borough Clerk by four PM on March twenty-fifth, the seventy-first day next preceding the day of the June fourth primary election for the general election. Nomination petitions for independent general election candidates and school election candidates are filed with the County Clerk before four PM on June fourth, the day of the primary election. Forms are available in the Clerk's Office for petitions. Voter registration forms, as well as mail-in ballot applications, are also available in the Clerk's Office and online at morrisselections.org. Cat and dog license renewals are underway, and licenses must be renewed by the end of January. And finally, any organization considering a raffle should please contact the Clerk's Office. Next, we have updates from the Finance Department. The Tax Department has a reminder for us, the first quarter property taxes are due February first. I'm happy to announce that we collected ninety-nine point eight-seven percent of the twenty-twenty-three property taxes. Special thanks to Chrissy and Hattie in the Tax Collection Department for doing such a great job with collections last year. Now we will talk about the budget. Tonight, we will continue our work of the twenty-twenty-four budget. Back in December, we briefly discussed the proposed five-year capital plan. This important document is available on Rosnet if anyone would like to review it. We also passed a temporary budget at the reorganization meeting, which is standard practice amongst all New Jersey municipalities. The reason we passed a temporary budget is so that newly-elected officials like Councilwoman Honnan and Councilman Forte can be involved in this year's budget process. This evening, we will review the Open Space Recreation and Historic Preservation Trust Fund, including last year's activity. Every year, we're reminded that the budget process revolves around the two thousand and fourteen Strategic Planning Guidelines. We continue to be guided by this important document and the work of Councilman Ben Wolkowitz. The budget process began back in the summer, when administration started discussing the capital and operating needs with with all of the department heads. Over this course of six council meetings, the governing body will discuss open space, capital, utilities, the municipal budget, and the department operating budgets. As a reminder, we have three budgets that we vote on and approve: the water utility budget, the electric utility budget, and the current fund, or main municipal budget. This is a very transparent, open process, and voting on the budget is one of the most important decisions, actions that council takes. Anyone who has questions about the budget process can visit the annual budget process page on rosenet.org. Assuming council approves, the remaining budget schedule for this season is as follows. On January twenty-second, at the next meeting, we will have presentations from the Electric and Public Works Department Heads. We will review the utility budgets and the utility fund balance, or surplus, for the utilities. On February twelfth, we plan on having a discussion on the municipal budget and municipal fund balance. On February twenty-sixth, we will have department head presentations. On March eleventh, we will have a second discussion on the draft budget. Strategic planning guidelines and alternate budget format will also be presented. If there is consensus, we will authorize administration to draft the official state budget document. On March twenty-fifth, we will have our final budget discussion and hope to introduce the official state budget. We need to introduce the document by this meeting so we can stay within the state statutes and budget rules. And finally, on April twenty-second, after the minimum twenty-eight-day period, council will hold a hearing and hopefully adopt our municipal budget. That's all tonight for Finance. And like I said, we will have a presentation tonight on Open Space Recreation and Historic Preservation Trust Fund. That's all.
Thank you. And Public Works Engineering, Mr. Langford.
Thank you, Mayor. Residents can place their Christmas trees at the curb for pickup. The Borough will be picking up the trees until about the end of this month and will be chipping them. Residents can also bring the trees to the recycling center for drop-off during normal operating hours. All trees must be cleared of lights, decorations, and tinsel. Our woodchips are recycled and are used by our contractors to make various bulge projects. Wreaths should also be put in the garbage as they have wire that holds them together. From the Sewer Department, with the heavy rains we have had, we've experienced minimal problems with our sewer pump stations. All check gates, all checks and gate valves are serviced on a regular basis and are working. We are preparing for the pending snowstorm that is predicted. From the Parks Department, we are almost done with the cleanup of the leaves from the various buildings and parks. We have not removed the benches from the downtown streets, as we have not had a significant snow forecast. If we see a storm coming, the benches will be pulled in. Thank you, Mayor.
You. Utilities, Mr. Albus.
See, Eric? Eric, you gotta come back here. Unless, Melissa's gonna cover for you.
From here, I can signal.
Okay, I'm sorry, I have to be looking up. Sorry about that. So, the Electric Department report. The department has been very busy doing markouts and streetlights replacement. Our interns did a great job cleaning and organizing the tool room at the Water and Light Plant. The department replaced three poles on Station Road for the well-beaten construction, and we have the pad mount transformer and the primary wire ready to go. The electric foreman has been in contact with the contractor. So far, so good. Not sure what that's leading to, but that's what's happening over there. Some of the responses that we had from Electric Utility on twelve twenty-two, standby crews got called to a low wire. They reattached the wire to a house. Twelve twenty-six, standby was called to an emergency mark out of thirty-seven Whiny Way. P S E G hit a water service. Twelve thirty-one, twenty-three, last year, standby was called to one fifty-one Greenbills Road for a large branch on primary wires. On January first, standby was called to Seven Delwood Park South for no power due to an overload on their transformer. We replaced the transformer with a larger one. Standby was called to Palmer Road for wires across the road, and standby was called to wires down at G B R Greenbills Road and eight Brooklake Road. Was broken electric line. From the Water Department, the Water Department responded to Whiny Way for the service that was struck by P S E G. Same call, different utility. Service connection was leaking on Park Avenue. We did the repair, but because Park Avenue was a Morris County road, we couldn't start until after nine A M., unless it was an emergency. We replaced a couple of meters throughout town due to either leaking meter or not working. All the bathrooms in the parks have been winterized, except for Dodgeville Playground Bathroom, which is heated and is used all year. Used by me once in a while when I walk my dog and I have to take a break from park. Some additional news. D P W worked overtime on Saturday into the evening hours clearing roads from the first snowfall. Did you already report that, Eric? I don't want to be redundant. No, I didn't. Okay. Today and tomorrow, crews will be clearing storm drains in anticipation of the heavy rains coming to minimize flooding issues throughout the town. Congratulations to our water foreman, Tom Dibias, repeating what the mayor said, on his retirement January second after forty-five years of service. Our public water system was in very good hands with Tom, and we wish him well in his retirement. Speaking about water, the Borough has engaged Agro Environmental Laboratory Services to be the new licensed operator for the Borough's water supply and distribution system, while our remaining staff pursue the required licenses and certifications so we can do that in-house. The National Water Meter has been hired to install new water meters for all customers. Their work should start in the near future, and residents will be contacted about arranging access to their homes to install new meters. Workers will have credentials and proper identification when coming to your house. That's all, Mayor. Oh, and then we already, you already said it, reported about the state of emergency tomorrow at five o'clock, and everybody's gotta be ready.
Thank you. Community Affairs, Liz Honahan.
Thank you, Mayor. The Downtown Development Commission will hold its annual reorganization meeting on Thursday, January eighteenth at seven fifteen in the second-floor committee room of Hartley Dodge. New and returning commissioners will receive the oath of office at this meeting. Also, for the D D C, the Taste of Madison will return to the Madison Hotel on Monday, March eighteenth, so please mark your calendars. For the Chamber of Commerce, good news, the response to the special edition Metropolis game was better than expected and completely sold out. So, thanks to the Chamber of Commerce and all of the members for making that a great success. Madison Community Arts, the Spotlight Kids will present the high school version of Chicago, running from January twelve through fourteenth. There will be evening and matinee performances throughout those days. Spotlight also will host its annual weekend workshop at the Center on January twenty-sixth and twenty-seven. Can find more information on their website. On January fifteenth, as part of the Dr. Martin Luther King Celebration, the American Association of University Women will screen the film Ruby Bridges at the Art Center at one P M. A discussion of the film will follow. The presentation is free, and the public is welcome. The Music Open Mic continues its monthly run on Wednesday, January tenth at seven, and the Comedy Open Mic will be held on Wednesday, January seventeenth at seven. The Come Original Showcase of new music will be held on Saturday, June twentieth. Over seventeen thousand patrons attended events at the Center in twenty twenty-three. There were a total of seven hundred and thirty-eight separate events. For twenty twenty-four, seven hundred and sixty-four events have already been booked, which accounts for thirty-four percent occupancy of the operational hours at the Center. And if preparation time is taken into account, the occupancy rises to fifty-three percent of total hours. Excluding major holidays in twenty twenty-four, there are only thirty days with no activity and only twelve Friday and seventeen Saturday evenings left with no events. For twenty twenty-five, there are already only sixty days without a booked event. Events for the entire year can be found on the M C A C landing page at madisonartsnj.org. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Health, Mr. Forte.
Thank you, Mayor. The Health Department is providing free pediatric COVID vaccines to children six months to eleven years. Residents can book an appointment through the website, www.wesfieldnewjersey.gov/health. That's because we have a shared services agreement with Westfield. The flyer attached also went out through Madison Channels with, or there was a flyer that's attached here, but that went out through Madison Channels with registration information that's out there. And anyone who wants more information can also contact the Health Department through the website. They are going to be hosting a clinic in Madison in the near future as well. They were able to serve two residents already last week, and the Health Department is also providing free flu and COVID vaccines to those that are homebound. Please call nine oh eight seven eight nine four zero seven zero, extension four zero seven five to schedule. They provided one already last week. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. In case you're wondering, with the reorganization, everyone has, almost everyone has new assignments. So, you heard reports from new people, except for Council President Range stayed with Public Safety. So, well done with your new assignments here. The next item is Communications and Petitions.
None received, Mayor.
Right now, we're on our first of two invitations for public comment. This is limited to items on our agenda discussion and resolutions that are part of the consent agenda. So, these are things you may comment on if you are interested in. The prequalifications for restoration of Hartley Dodge Memorial East Wing, Masonic Lodge restoration presentation, and Open Space Recreation Historic Preservation Budget Update. And these are the resolutions that are part of our consent agenda, and you may comment on these, and this will also give you an understanding when we get to consent agenda. Resolution fifty is authorizing donation of four used portable basketball hoops. This is from the Recreation Department to the Board of Education. Resolution, yeah, how'd that happen? Yeah, I was gonna say, okay. Resolution thirty-eight is, resolution adopting prequalification regulations for the bid I just mentioned, which is part of our discussion agenda. Resolution thirty-nine is authorizing settlement of certain tax appeals, and this is for Block four one zero one Lot ten, commonly known as fifty Midway Terrace. Resolution forty is authorizing shared service agreement with the city's summit to provide information technology services, and this is a renewal. Resolution forty-one is appointing Father Owen Moran as Police Chaplain for the Madison Police Department. Resolution forty-two is approving special event permit to allow use of Memorial Park Parking Area by Karen Giordano. These are for Thursdays in April and May and Thursdays in October through December. Resolution forty-three is appointment, reappointing Christine Mahler to position of tax collector. Resolution forty-four is authorizing contract for gasoline through Morris County Co-op, not to exceed one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, and is funded through the twenty twenty-four operating budget. Resolution forty-five is ratifying award of purchase contract for rock salt to Atlantic Salt of Lowell, Massachusetts through County Co-op, not to exceed one hundred twenty thousand, also funded through the twenty twenty-four operating budget. Resolution forty-six is authorizing contract for diesel fuel through Morris County Cooperative Pricing Council, not to exceed seventy thousand through the twenty twenty-four operating budget. Resolution forty-seven is authorizing execution amendment to the development agreement with Walnut Street, L P for twenty-eight Walnut Street, and the Civic Center, also a community place, is related to the affordable housing that we're breaking ground with shortly. Resolution forty-eight is approving raffle license application submitted by Ice Hockey for February ninth. Resolution forty-nine is not to exceed amount, or contract not to exceed fifty thousand dollars to provide risk management services, awarding to Risk Strategies of Cranford, New Jersey, and this is to control our risk and control, manage our insurance costs, and this is also funded through twenty twenty-four budget as deemed appropriate. You may comment on any of those resolutions or the three agenda items. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward, state your name, address, and the agenda item you were commenting on, and try to keep your comments to three minutes. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we move on to our agenda discussions. And Tyler, Tyler Merson, or Hartley Dodge Guru.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Tyler Merson. I work for the Hartley Dodge Foundation as a project manager, and I'm here tonight to talk about a very big project that will be going on in the Hartley Dodge Building in the coming year. The purpose of this project is to create over three thousand square feet of office space on the ground floor that will be used by building, engineering, and land use, renovation of the old courtroom and offices on the first floor to be used by the Madison Historical Society as a museum, renovation of the second floor to create offices for human resources, I T and communications, as well as installation of an elevator between the ground and second floors, and updating of the H V A C plumbing and electrical systems for the entire east wing, all of which dates back to nineteen thirty-five, when the building was first built. The project schedule, we began with a report furnished by historic building architects in January of twenty twenty-three. This report was commissioned by the Hartley Dodge Foundation, and then the Borough contracted with H V A to begin producing construction documents this past summer. We began the prequalification process for bidding in September, and we're here tonight, and we're back on November twenty-seventh, to talk about the resolution tonight for prequalification. Construction documents should be completed by the end of this month, and the bidding process will hopefully begin in February, with construction to begin in the second quarter of this year. The project details, most of the work will be happening on the ground floor, starting with the installation of a new elevator, as well as updating of the mechanical and plumbing system, the installation of a new H V A C system, asbestos abatement, new public, a new public-facing bathroom, as well as two staff bathrooms, and the renovation of an existing bathroom already on the ground floor, and the creation of reception areas, counters for building and land use departments, as well as new flooring, updating windows, the new furniture, and the installation of a security system at all of the public-facing doors. On the first floor, there will be the installation of a small kitchenette for the use by the Madison Historical Society, as well as updating the existing bathrooms, and then the repair and patching of floors and walls as needed. Lastly, on the second floor, we will have a reconfiguration of the entrance to the Finance Department in the west wing, as well as creation of a flexible working space for part-time employees and future employees on the second floor, and the creation of office spaces in the existing second floor space for I T and human resources. And then last, I'd like to just touch a bit on the main purpose of this hearing tonight, the criteria for evaluating prospective bidders. They are, first and foremost, that the bidder acting as a general contractor needs to demonstrate verifiable experience in the supervision and administration of historic preservation projects, that the proposed superintendent and manager be required to demonstrate the same, that the contractor will provide a list of names, titles, years of experience of all principal members of the prospective bidder's staff who will be available and signed to this particular project, the contractor must not have wrongly defaulted on contract or had work terminated for non-performance within the past five years, and must not have been denied consent of surety, a bid bond, or performance bond within the past twelve months based on the bidder's inability to meet surety's reasonable underwriting standards, and must demonstrate satisfactory performance on all current projects in progress. All I have. Are there any questions?
And before any council recognizes the public hearing, we'll leave that up on the screen. If there's anyone in the public that has a comment or question on the prequalification, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council? Tom?
Thanks. All right. Are we gonna be, are we, did we already see the plans, or they're not, are they finalized?
The construction document plans should be finalized within the next four weeks, and the project update report has been available, and I can certainly provide you a copy.
You made a presentation on, I recall that. So, has the Historic Society been involved in designing what they want of their space?
Yes, they have. And they really only had two requests. One was for the One was for the kitchenette in the back, and the second was for lighting specific to the old courtroom, which will now be used as a gallery space.
Oh, wow, that's fantastic. You said something about new windows on the East Wing?
We, I stand corrected, we will not be replacing any of the windows. We will have to replace some of the glass on the ground floor. It is the glass that has wire in it, and that's not considered safe by today's standards. For those panes of glass will be removed from the existing sashes and replaced with modern safety glass.
I didn't think you would be able to really replace these windows.
Not there, and there, generally in good functioning order, so.
Oh, good, thanks, that was very thorough. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Thank you. Masonic Lodge Restoration.
Masonic Lodge at 170 Main Street is now owned by the Borough. The building was built in 1824, and this May, 18th, will be the 200th anniversary of the building, which originally served as the home of the First Presbyterian Church. The Masons took title to the property in 1935 and have been excellent stewards of the property for 89 years, and it's, uh, it's a good day for the Borough to be able to acquire the site and preserve it, but it's a sad day to lose the Masons as contributing members of our community. They're going to be relocating to Morris Town or to Burnsville and merging their operation in with those chapters, one of those chapters. In terms of the anniversary, Michael is unaware that he's been volunteered to work with the Madison Historical Society on an open house that will tie into that 200-year anniversary when we can acknowledge the generosity of Martin Heller, and hopefully have an open house for our residents and community members to come into the building and see it for the first time in many, many years. The building is listed on the State and National Register of Historic Places, which is a wonderful thing to recognize the historical significance and integrity of the building, but it also generates obligations to make sure that the, any repairs or renovations are done to the U.S. Department of Interior Standards, which our plans will be consistent with those more stringent requirements to preserve this building. Next slide, please. In terms of, we had been negotiating with the Masons, and our hope initially was that they would stay in place and that we would work with them to secure funding, and they would continue their stewardship of the building. That didn't prove feasible, and they decided at a certain point year later to list the property for sale for $2.5 million. That listing did not have a restriction on demolition, and in fact, the appraisal came up with a higher valuation based on a demolition of the building and the use of the property as a land transaction with potentially residential housing or other uses, but the building would have been demolished. After significant negotiations, thanks to the mayor, Ashkri Bell, and others, with the Masons, we were able to negotiate a purchase price less than 50% of what the Masons had listed the property for sale at, and we, thanks to Marina, our attorney, we closed title on December 20th for $1,125,000. The Masons, under the agreement, will stay for 90 days until March 30th of 2024, and that will allow them to have an orderly transition and to relocate their personal possessions and furniture that are not included in the transaction to their new headquarters. One highlight of this would be that unlike the state and county, when you get grants for historic properties, they normally have a 20- to 30-year easement, conservation easement, that you cannot do anything to materially change the building. In this situation, the Borough as the governing body has decided to put a perpetual lifetime easement on the property to ensure that it will never, ever be demolished or changed in any substantial way other than improve it, but the exterior of the building and the historic fabric of the building will remain forever, and that's a wonderful thing. So how do we pay for it? We were fortunate to receive a $1 million acquisition grant from Martin Heller, who's a wonderful Madison resident philanthropist, and this was in honor of his late wife Peggy and his late son Mark. It's payable over a five-year period at $200,000 a year, and we've had recent conversations that Mr. Heller may, in fact, accelerate that payment and make us a lump sum payment rather than wait the five years, which would also be a wonderful thing for the Borough, and that's just another testament to his generosity. The Borough, with your help, appropriated $125,000 from our Open Space Recreation and Historic Preservation Trust, so if you put the $1 million plus $125,000 from the Madison Open Space, which thanks to the, Melissa's help with the Open Space Advisory Committee, that's how we were able to give the money to Marina to pay the bill at the closing on December 20th. In terms of the renovations, then the next question is, how do we pay to renovate and repair the building? We previously secured, when we were working with the Masons, we had applied for and secured a grant from Morris County Historic Preservation for $107,200. We've talked with the leader of that program, Ray Chang, and that grant agreement is still valid and in force and effect, and has been extended because they're very excited that the building will be preserved. We had similar conversation with Glenn Suponis, who's our program rep at the State Historic Trust. They had previously approved in 2022 a grant of $488,100. That agreement has been extended as well, and good news for us is Glenn will remain as our program rep, but he just recently, earlier this, last week, was announced and appointed as the Executive Director of the State Historic Trust. So we have a very strong advocate for us, of our program rep, who's now in charge of the entire program for the state of New Jersey. He's been a very strong advocate throughout for all of our projects, including this building. With Michael's help, we're going to be doing a couple things. On, he and I have applied and have enrolled in a workshop with Morris County on January 31st to go over the rules for the next round of applications. There's a letter of intent that we will, that come to you for, that we need to submit to the county by February 28th, and then the bullet point there, the last one, is that we then have to apply to the county no later than March 28th, 2024. You're allowed, if you buy historic property and they deem it as such, and we believe we meet all that criteria, we're eligible for up to 50% reimbursement of the, what they call the accepted market value. We believe the accepted market value is what we paid, $1,125,000. If that theory holds, and if they have adequate funding, that would generate $562,000 additional. And if you add those three pots, the $107,200 from Morris County, the $488,100 from the State Historic Trust, and the new Morris County acquisition grant of $562,000, we would have $1,157,300 for renovations. So we believe we have a spending plan to show how we pay for it, and how we can repair it and renovate it and get it into good shape. Right now, we're working with our architect to update the cost estimates, and hopefully we don't get snicker shock when we actually go out for bids, but we think we have adequate funding for those renovations. Next slide, please. Proposed uses of the space. I'm gonna use the bottom bullet point first. You know, there is no firm plan, other than the fact that we would work with the governing body, the community, and stakeholder input to guide the future uses. Our initial thrust, and I think our priority would be, based on comments from the governing body, would be to return our senior services back to Madison. Right now, they're under a contract. They have to go to Myersville Road in Chatham Township for services. We'd like to bring our seniors home and have this be the centerpiece for providing a location for activities, gatherings, any type of senior activity would be back in Madison at this location. And as part of that, we would meet, at the mayor's suggestion, with the current contractor provider, which is the Chatham Senior Center of the Chatham's, and see if they could be a participant with us in providing those program services onsite for us, as well as they do now, and excellently provide the service for our residents at their location in Chatham Township. That would be our first option. Failing that, we'd obviously, we'd have to staff back up and start our own program. But our preference would be to work with the Chatham Senior Center to provide services onsite in Madison. It also can be a space which will make this life a little easier. You know, we always struggle trying to identify polling locations for Madison elections. This is a suitable location for that. It also can be a resource and a meeting space for nonprofits, community events, things of that nature, but all of that will play out. There'll be an announcement about these community input and stakeholder meetings, because we'd like to get input as to what people think the highest and best use, in addition to the senior use, would be for that space. Next slide, please. Necessary upgrades. Building looks beautiful from outside, but it's a 200-year-old building, so it needs work. Our architect is Clark Katniss, they specialize in historic preservation. John Hatch is a senior partner at that location. He has already prepared preliminary architectural plans that are now being updated, but we know at a minimum that there's an issue with the foundation of the building. It's settled, and there's gaps on the exterior walls that are moving away from the structure, so we need to stabilize the foundation as one of the first priorities. The fire escape on the side of the building is pulling away from the side of the building and needs to be secured properly or upgraded. There's no elevator or handicap access to the second floor, so we have to figure out a way, how to make the building more usable for those who are mobility challenged to get to the second level. The bathrooms don't have hot water, so that's not good from a health perspective. There's also no bathroom on the second level of the building, so we have to figure out how we address that. The kitchen is currently not operable. It's been decommissioned by the Masons at the request or the direction of their insurance company, because they were getting denied coverage if they maintained the kitchen, because it was not safe. So we need to figure out a way, a better way to get the kitchen back in service, like a different, more modern, probably warming kitchen than the current kitchen that's there. Second floor windows, on the second floor, and there's photos showing, the original building had windows on the exterior, so if you go to the site, the windows are there from the outside, but they had been blocked up on the inside on the second level. We'd like to remove the paneling and reopen the windows and bring in that natural light on the second floor, which is the original construction back in 1835, so we'd like to get back to the original fabric of the building. Obviously, we need HVAC upgrades, security enhancements, lighting, all of, all of that, and we'll be working with our architect and this governing body on those plans. The last two slides are just very illustrative, preliminary architectural sketches that just, when we were working with the Masons, these are the ones that are now being updated, but it basically shows the ground floor is accessible at ground level for our seniors, so we don't need an elevator for the ground floor. It's an easy walk, it's a rear entrance, so you park to the rear, and you can walk right in at grade. We don't need a commercial kitchen, which this is showing a commercial kitchen. We believe a warming kitchen would be more appropriate for that. We're probably going to want to relocate a unisex bathroom that has hot water, and also address the hot water deficiencies in the other. The plans are also being updated because the state building code has changed, and there's new requirements since these plans were done in 2022, so we need to make adjustments and revisions to be compliant with the state building code and also the U.S. Department of Interior Standards. Second floor, same thing, we treat, it's not a typical second floor, it's basically, we have to address handicap access, whether it's a stair glide or some way to get people upstairs. I don't see how an elevator could work in our budget or in a historic building unless we do something to the rear of the building outside and attach it from the rear. We obviously need to identify a bathroom location on the second floor, and we'd like to reopen those windows that are now blocked out. That's basically it. I'd like to thank Michael for his help with the plan, and I'm available if there are any questions.
Well done. Questions, comments? I think the big theme here is, you have a lot of work, but we have, we're saving the gem, and it'll be with us forever, and we'll be celebrating the 200th anniversary this spring, and looking forward to seeing that space fully programmed, and the fact that when we started the conversations with the Masons, we were talking about use of the first floor part-time, and now we have 100% use 100% of the time. So this is quite an opportunity. Now Jim is up for open space recreation budget.
Thank you, Mayor. As Councilwoman Ehrlich stated, we're going to be talking about Open Space Recreation and Historic Preservation Trust tonight, and then we've got a full schedule of budget hearings going forward the next four weeks. If there's any questions, please let me know. They'll be posted on RoseNet, the dates of what will be discussed, very identical, very much similar, if not identical, to the schedule that we had last year in terms of what's happening when. So we want to talk tonight about the open space trust fund. Michael, if you'll advance the slide. This shows the activity in the trust fund, the inflows, I'm sorry, Michael, did we go too far? There we go. This shows the inflows and the outflows in the trust fund, tax levy, field rental, user fees, interest, and county grants coming back in. All were inflows into the trust fund, and outflows were debt payments, and we take the field rental and user fees and set them off to the side into a reserve, so they come in, they're an inflow and then an outflow, various expenses for Drew Forest, and then the pickleball court, parks improvement, and the purchase of Masonic Lodge, which Raymond just talked about. The balance started at the beginning of the year under $300,000, and it's ended at $756,687. I think that's appropriate, because we've been talking about the possibility of the acquisition of Drew Forest, so letting this fund build up a little bit is not a bad thing. Next slide, please. One of the biggest items that increased this year was interest income, which was not a surprise. We all talked about it and expected it. We can anticipate it, because we don't know what the interest rate's going to be like. I can anticipate it now, what the interest rate's going to be like in November. If I could, I'd be working on Wall Street, make a lot of money, but that's okay, I'm here and happy with that, but it was a nice benefit. You can see this chart shows that we earned more interest income than we have in the last five years. It will abate a little bit, but we'll still earn a significant amount of interest income this year, which again, will help for whatever programming the council decides. Next slide, please. We have a reserve for the turf field, and the turf field is coming towards the end of its life. The payments on the debt for the turf field will end in 2028, so in about four years. The Recreation Director said it's got about three years remaining, maybe we can get four years out of it, but the Recreation Director is going to work with the Recreation Advisory Committee and the various green groups on alternative infill options, and they'll figure out, and we'll come back to council with some suggestions on that important, important topic. Sure, flip in line. All right, sir. The next shows the field rental and user fees. We obviously had a significant dip in 2020 during the pandemic, but field rental and user fees are holding around. We had the second-best year in the last five years. That's kudos to Zach Ellis and his coordination and being able to work with the various groups to find rental opportunities and use of the field when it's not being used by the various recreation groups. Next slide, please. So I just wanted to talk a moment about how this fund works. It's similar to general capital, not that I want to get too accountant-oriented, but when we have an outflow or an appropriation, for example, the pickleball court, we immediately take the money out of the account and put it into a reserve area, so we can go ahead and make the pickleball court and pay off the bills associated with that. And same with the purchase of Masonic Lodge. On this past year, you can see those two, the three major important ordinances that have happened. The purchase of the Masonic Lodge happened, the pickleball court happened, and the parks improvement plan is in the process of happening. There were a couple of major appropriations last year, one for the East Wing. We just heard Tyler talk about the fact that we're going to be moving forward with that project shortly, and one for the Dodge Field Playground. So we have over $500,000 that's in the bank account, but not shown in the balance here for a project for the Dodge Field Playground that we're going to be advancing later on in the year. A grant opportunity has become available, which was a pleasant surprise to us, and we're going to be pursuing that grant opportunity, which may allow us to give a portion of that $500,000 back to the trust fund, which will be fantastic. So we'll be working on that, but at the end of the project, just like when we cancel capital ordinances, and that money kind of comes back and available in the General Capital Improvement Fund, we will do that with the open space trust fund. We've got a couple, whether it's $100, a couple thousand dollars, so we'll be coming back to you saying, we're just going to cancel these ordinances, and there'll be a little bit more money that will flow back into the, available in the open space trust fund because of projects that have been completed. Next slide, Michael. This, this is actually something that I produced in 2016. It's a legacy slide. I showed it a couple times in 2016, 17, 18, 19. It just kind of is a reminder of how the short-term and long-term financing occurred. We got some money from the Athletic Foundation, we were using user fees, we were, had a short-term borrowing, and then we paid off the short-term borrowing, and then went with long-term bonds. You go to the next slide, you'll see this is the debt schedule, and the debt schedule is both for the turf field and for the land. Turf field useful life at the time, we thought was going to go to about 2028, and it looks like it's going to, so that's how far we borrowed for the turf field. We borrowed longer for the land, and this, this shows the annual payments of principal and interest for both, and then the combined payment. As you can see in the column all the way to the right, there is a slow and slight decline in the amount of payments. in the amount of payment each year because smaller amounts to pay, smaller interest, and eventually this will be paid off completely, the field in 2028 and the land in 2033. And so I just thought that was good to include there. I know I get questions time for time, time to time on that. It'll be up on Rosanet. If people have any questions, they can refer to it. With that, I'll take any questions from council.
Questions? Comments? Rachel, then Tom?
Thanks, Jim. I'm once again grateful that the council voted to reinstate the full open space historic preservation recreation tax levy, I guess, two years ago now, because I feel like as we look ahead to the future, we certainly want to be having those funds at the ready for potential purchase of the Drew Forest, as you say. As the most recent liaison in the last two years to the various green committees, the Environmental Commission, Sustainable Madison, Parks Advisory, and others, there's been a lot of discussion about the turf field and whether artificial turf is the healthiest and most playable surface that we can have for our youth sports, and I'm certain there will be a lot of impassioned discussion about reskining those fields. There are, have been, you know, issues raised about how artificial turf is very hot to play on. There's health concerns about the chemical makeup of the rubber, you know, particles. So I trust there'll be, you know, robust engagement period where we talk about what we're going to do to resurface the fields. Do you have some, like a look ahead to what some of the options might be that are up for consideration? Because I know this is important to a lot of volunteers and to families in town.
We haven't engaged the groups yet. We're kind of telegraphing our pitch and saying, hey, this is coming, three years. We, you know, kind of tonight are notifying the green groups that this is coming. Zach Ellis and the recreation groups, I am sure, will want to continue with a turf field of some sort because it allows for so much more play as opposed to the, say, the grass fields at Bellie Ellard that will be soaked tomorrow and would be difficult to play on where two days from now, you could go on the turf field because of the way the drainage is at the MRC and have practices or play. The infill, absolutely, there'll be discussion on the various options for infill. There's quark, there's, I believe, coconut husk, and other more organic options that are out there that will absolutely be coming back to council, and I think there will be obviously a robust discussion. If the green groups want to advocate for not having turf, then there'll be a turf war, so to say. Don't put that in. And we'll have, we'll have a discussion in council, ultimately make the decision.
Thank you.
Before we go to Tom, just besides the recovery after heavy rain and things like that, it's just the heavy use. You look at the amount of use that the MRC gets versus Dodge Field, I would say the MRC is getting far more use, and you look at the condition of Dodge Field, it just never recovers. You should, a natural turf should be resting at least a season, one growing season a year and so on, so that will all go into the hopper. Tom?
Yeah, so to piggyback on what Rachel said, when I was on the Environmental Commission, this is when we were actually looking at putting in the turf, and there was a lot of stakeholders coming to our meetings constantly with options, and they were bringing studies about how the crush rubber would leak toxins potentially. We had some options, and then the sports community thought that, or they were sure that the crush rubber had the best G-force impact or something to that effect, Jim, remember? That was the argument for safety purposes, so that was why it ended up moving in that direction. But there was, even back then, 13 years ago. Is it 13 years?
12.
Now, well, maybe 12. So anyway, it was, it was options then, now the options are probably five or six times more, so this is going to be a good review for us to put up. And also, there's more information now about what contaminants might be coming out of the crush rubber. So that's something we're very concerned about. We had discussion on that before. So another thing, Jim, you talked briefly about the interest that you earned from having money in that open space account, but most of that money is already spoken for, for our project. That's why we're holding it?
So, so let's look at the balance right now. 731, 2023, $756,000, but there is about $240,000, and I never remember numbers, but I just had a little look at them earlier today, so don't make me this good, but there's about $240,000 for the East Wing that's set aside, there's $555,000 for the Dodge Field Playground, and another smaller amounts that I talked about that we want to cancel. So all of that together is what generates the interest. Tom's probably trying to calculate what our, what our interest rate is.
I did it.
And it's, it changes month to month, but it is very competitive. We're always looking at that versus New Jersey Cash Management Fund, versus buying treasuries, versus buying CDs, and we have the flexibility in the bank to move the money or withdraw it at any point in time. I think we're maybe up 20 basis points less than what we might get on a New Jersey Cash Management Fund, and I think at the beginning part of this year, we'll be looking to move some of the money into that. It won't show to you, we'll still have $758,000, I just don't know whether we have in the bank or that, but we'll be looking to maximize our interest while following the cash management plan, which council approved at the reorganization meeting.
Sure. So the point I was going to make is that it's prudent now, probably to keep making these interest payments and a little paying off the loan, because we could come up with the money, pay off the loan, and we would probably avoid, I was doing that math in my head, like a million dollars of interest in the next five or six years, but you're earning $115,000 because you're probably earning more now than what our, what our bonding interest is.
I want to say that there's arbitrage, but yes, we're, the borrowing rate we have is favorable, and there are, you know, we may need a lot of money very shortly if something happens with Drew Forest, so I don't want to sit here and take all the money and pay off that and then say, geez, I wish we had the flexibility, so I agree with you.
Right, it's not available money anyway because it's appointed to projects.
Well, the other ones, the $750,000.
$750 is, it is and it isn't, because we also have projects coming to them.
And we'll go back to Rachel, what if you're done, Tom?
I just want to clarify, Tom, because I want to make sure I understand this too. On slide two, we have an available balance as of the end of last year of $756,687. That does not include the money that's already been set aside elsewhere for the playground and other projects. So, so this, this $756,000 plus dollars is not spoken for. This is available.
Correct.
Okay, just clarifying.
And the total's like 1.8 or somewhere in that net worth. Yep. Yes.
Questions or comments?
So when, when do we see, what are potential projects? We know we have expenses, so we're going to have the debt payments this year. What do we see besides that?
I think the open space and trust fund, the open space committee will be adding discussions on that and will advance a list, and obviously, for things that you want or want to advance, you're ultimately the authority that votes and appropriates the dollars.
Yeah, the guidance right now is, until we know where the Drew Forest is going, that, you know, anything major is thrown off, but one of the things that we often talk about with the importance of this fund is what it does, preserves open space, and when a piece of property becomes available, if you don't preserve it, it could be gone forever, which is why Drew Forest is on the radar, and it's also historic preservation. And we know that if we weren't able to step in to save the Masonic Lodge, that would have been lost forever, or even this building, to make sure that it gets restored, especially when it comes to structural issues, that we need to be ready to get the Masonic Lodge structurally sound before we do anything else, because we have taken on a gem, we don't want to lose it.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Melissa?
Just that the advisory committee does receive applications from multiple sources in town, and they can come at any time, and the recommendation and consideration is done generally at a monthly meeting. They haven't had their first meeting in 2024 yet, but, you know, the other thing that can happen is that, for example, Memorial Park Trails, those were funded partially by open space funds, but then had a significant match from the county. So just a reminder that we multiply our money by, by getting matching grants.
All right. Good. Thank you very much. Very good, Jim. And we move on to our awardments for hearing, because this is our first regular meeting of the new year. So we are on to our second invitation for public comment. This is when you may comment on any topic. Same rules apply. Step up to lectern, say your name and address. Try to keep your comments to three minutes, but we do give you a one-minute grace, and we're asking to stop at four.
Good evening. Judy Kroll, 27, Laurel Way. I'm here this evening to speak on behalf of Friends of Drew Forest, and I appreciate all the comments that were made about the open space trust fund budget and the hope that much of that money that's available will be used in the not-too-distant future as part of the purchase price for the forest. I'm really here for sort of a quick public service announcement. I, we don't have a lot going on right now as far as meetings and public events that we're working on, but I did want to just remind everyone that the forest is, we always talk about the forest having something for all seasons, and even though it's winter now and then we have our first snow on the ground, I would really encourage anyone in the council and anyone in the audience, whether you're personally here or online, to consider a visit to the forest during the winter months. We often don't think about taking walks in the forest during winter, but it has much to offer us. Despite the dormancy of most plant species, there are attractions in the forest, including wildlife and trees that are really easy to see now that they don't have leaves on them, and also just the peace and serenity. So after the rush for the holidays, it's really wonderful to go into a forest and walk or sit on a bench or just observe wildlife. It's very, very peaceful, and it really is rejuvenating. I love to go in the forest in the wintertime and look at the trees. It's one of the only times of year you can actually stand under a tree and look up and see the actual top of the tree, and it's astounding how many large trees are in that forest, some of the largest ones in Morris County, as you are aware. So it's really beautiful and spectacular to do that. Also, there's a lot of birds that are year-round residents of the forest, and it's great, again, without leaves on the trees, you can really see them and watch them go from tree to tree. Red-tailed hawks, cardinals, chickadees, belted kingfishers, owls, and all kinds of waterfowl are still in the forest, and beyond our feathered friends, there's foxes, raccoons, possums, and other mammals there, also generally easy to spot in the wintertime. So consider a walk in the forest. It's a regular part of your wintertime activity. You may be surprised at how much you see or how good you feel when you're finished, and just a reminder to everybody to stay on the trails because in the leaves are pollinators and other insects that are overwintering, and they use the leaves to keep warm, so stay on the trails and enjoy the beauty. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Probably be good to take, probably not tomorrow or Wednesday, but later this week, to take a walk in the forest to see what it, the role it had in stormwater management and
Yes.
capturing water and recharging it into our aquifer.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to comment? Please step forward. Welcome, Kevin.
My name is Kevin Humes, 2D Hart Place. Questioning the, the parking during school zones, 8:00 AM to 8:45, 3:00 and 3:45. If we can get a meter person or police, because there's a lot of illegal parking, which can cause a fire hazard.
Our routine is, we'll capture your comments. We won't have a dialogue back and forth, but anything else they wanted to bring up at this point?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. So yeah, we've had ongoing conversations with this. We will pass this on to the chief and others to look into the parking, as I assume, in particular around Central Avenue School, which is where you, that you walk. Anyone else wishing to comment? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. And we now move on to introduction ordinances. Clerk, please read the statement.
The ordinance scheduled for her first reading has a hearing date set for January the 22nd, 2024. It'll be posted, published in the Madison Eagle, posted on bulletin board, made available members of the public requesting copies.
Can I call up ordinance 1-2024 and ask the clerk to read said ordinance by title?
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, amending Chapter 195-32.4 of the Madison Borough Code entitled CBD 1, CBD 2, Central Business District Zone Regulations.
Mayor, I move ordinance 1-2024.
Second.
Okay, and this is related to, just clarifying and expanding some of the uses in CBD 1, CBD 2. We have a subcommittee of the planning board that has been looking at land use in the borough and making recommendations. This is one of the early ones coming through. Do you want to add anything to that?
Nope, I think that's a good, good synopsis. One of the major points is around first floor uses and potential parking uses that are accessory to the residential uses upstairs. So I think that's, I think that's good.
Any other, yes, Rachel?
I'll just add, having read through the ordinance and the manner in which parking would be permitted at the ground floor of newer renovated buildings, that I have mixed feelings about this because I am a firm believer that if you build more parking, more cars will come, and one of the problems we struggle with is congestion, you know, through and in our downtown. But on the other hand, I understand that there is a demand to create more housing downtown and provide parking for that, you know, denser development. So I appreciate the sensitivity of the way the ordinance is drafted to require that only 25, allow only 25% of the frontage of the building to be used for parking and parking access. So you wouldn't be looking at, you know, looking into enclosed parking from Main Street, for instance, or other streets in the Central Business District, and the fact that it would be limited, you need to have 60% of the ground floor use be, uses other than parking, I think is important. But mainly, it's about the frontage, right, so that we're not seeing unsightly parking as part of our downtown district. So like I said, I think it's, it's a balanced ordinance, even though I would rather we came up with other mobility solutions for improving circulation downtown than to increase parking. I think this is well-written, and I understand the need and the desire to allow this as a permitted use.
Good comments. I think one of the things we have seen in recent approvals is, you know, some projects approved without any parking, recognizing that why create more parking when there are opportunities to use the commuter lots or the shopper lots overnight. One of the things I do like about this also is, not to single out a building, but there is a building on Central Avenue which is all parked on the first floor, and if you go from Elmer to Chapel, that is all zoned for commercial, and you basically have created a dead zone on the block because there's no activity. It was one of the great comments I heard, as a mother is walking with her young child and you can kind of see the side of the building and the bars in there, and they said, and the child asked mother, is that a prison for cars? So, you know, certainly, I think this is, reinforces better planning than what we saw in that project. Any other comments? Tom? In, in the CBD 2, so you would not see it on Main Street, but you could see it on Elmer or Cook, for example. Yep.
Okay, and there, right now, there is probably no examples in CBD 1 where there's parking on the ground floor of a commercial of a commercial building. Now, the movie theater is sloped in the back.
Right, yeah. But the frontage is all commercial.
Right. So we're just reinforcing that we don't want any, we prefer not to have any development like that. Okay. There's mention of a theater here, but we don't have a theater anymore. I would like us to consider that if we're going to add some more density in residential apartments, that maybe we can consider some additional parking somewhere else so that when we ask developers coming in, having meetings at the planning board, where you guys are sitting, the first question isn't like, okay, you're going to need a parking variance. Because maybe we'll be able to offer them some opportunity to park somewhere, and then you can get past that. Because they want to develop here, and we want them to. Or if we don't, then we're never going to give them a variance anyway. Something to think about for your planning board team here.
Thank you.
Yep.
I just want to be clear that the changes that are introduced in this ordinance do not change densities or heights or how big of a building you can build, massing standards or anything like that. There's some clarifications on usage only. So I don't want anybody to be confused that we're permitting increased density in downtown or anywhere else with this particular ordinance.
Very good clarification. Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Mr. Harlan Pootis?
Yes.
Ms. Honahan?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
We now move on to consent agenda resolutions. Will a clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move the consent agenda resolutions 38, 2024 through Resolution 50, 2024.
Second.
Any expression or any of that need to be pulled now that we have them in order?
I have a question about the one, R44, 2024, which is regarding the fuel delivery. Or is this actually $175,000 for the purchase of our fuel? Is this just delivery, Jim? Or is that the total of the fuel?
That's our year's supply of gasoline fuel.
Right, right. Because there's mention on the next page of the delivery charge. And then there's another contract for diesel. And I was curious to know why the diesel costs so much more to deliver. Did you see the difference in cost? It's three times price. I don't know why, it's just, you know why, Ray?
I don't know why specifically. The prices are determined by the co-op, and they're about 30% less than.
Oh, sure, you're saving money. Sure.
Any other? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Mr. Harlan Pootis?
Yes.